Meeting of the Recreation Commission, Tuesday, November 24th, 7:00 PM. For those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any items on the agenda under public appearance or oral communication, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance of City Council chambers and submit it to staff as early as possible. We have a roll call?
You certainly may.
Well, we should do the pledge first.
I guess we should do the pledge first.
Jack?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral order.
Okay, now we can do the roll call. Commissioner Proaño.
Here.
Commissioner Pastor.
Here.
Vice Chair Kelly.
Here.
And Chair Letta.
Here.
And absent this evening is Commissioner Rowena Poti-Meafua.
Can I have an approval of the agenda?
Some moved second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving approval of the minutes from September 22nd, 2015.
I just had a question on the minutes. It says here that it's the Colma Rotary Club that made the presentation. Is it the Daly City Colma?
It is indeed, good catch.
Thank you.
If I can find my...
So I'd like to have that correction made.
So I have a motion with the revision.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Director's report. Just...
Good evening, pass those around. The first item on our agenda this evening is a proposed fee increase for the Summer Youth Recreation Program, or as I would prefer to say, a proposed fee restructuring of the Summer Youth Recreation Program. And this evening, we're seeking the endorsement or support of the Recreation Commission, and this would be brought forward to the City Council who would adopt the new fee, assuming you concur and they concur by resolution at a future City Council meeting. And just some brief background, I've got lots of information if you want to dive into the details, I try to keep it short and to the point. So last year, our Summer Youth Recreation Program provided a safe, fun, and creative environment for more than 2,600 children over the course of the eight-week program. That's not necessarily 2,600 unique children, but total number of participants. Some of them participated in more than one week. In fact, I would say some probably participated in all eight weeks, some were just there for one week, but in all, 26, more than 2,600. Our average daily attendance was over 330, which is certainly more than we've had in recent years, and we've been running pretty much near at over capacity at the sites. And just to refresh your memory, the sites we have are Geller Park, Hillside Park, March Bank Park, Westlake Park, and Westmore Park. And of those, Westlake Park is by far the busiest with an average daily attendance of over 130 for this past summer, which is far greater than we anticipated. We figured somewhere between 100, 120, but we were often over 140 at the site, which gets a little tense, and it's part of the reason we're here before you. The weekly rate for the past summer was $63, was the going rate for the week. Now, that did not include a lot of activity add-ons that we would, so it would be $5 here, $5 there, for example, going to the pool, or participating in a craft activity, or a cooking activity, which made the registration process a little bit complicated, because if you're familiar with the iPlay registration, well, you would sign up for camp and choose a location, and if you wanted your child to participate in the events, they were all add-on, so it was kind of an all-in-one. What we're proposing is changing the weekly fee from $63 a month, the base fee, up to $93, and it sounds like a huge jump, but what we're proposing is that would include the activities, and we would do away with the extra activity add-ons that we've done in the past. We would still charge extra for what we call "big trips." You know, last year, we went to an A's game, we went to Coal Canyon, we went to the tech museum down in San Jose, did I miss one? I think I did. Anyway, that gives you kind of a flavor for the bigger trips, and that involves a bus and a little more cost in our site. And we don't, with 300 and some kids, we literally don't have the capacity to send all of them to the big trips, so that is an add-on.
How many kids on that, you know, average week, did not pay the extra money? Was it significant? Was there a feeling of the kids, of kids are getting something I'm not getting in addition to that?
There was some of that in both the big trips, because they had reached capacity, and kids that didn't get signed up in time kind of felt left out sometimes.
I'm talking about the more everyday stuff.
You know, the registration process was a little bit confusing. I think the kids are very resilient, and David, feel free to interject any time. I don't think the kids necessarily felt terribly left out.
Depending on the project and the location.
Use a mic if you could, I'm sorry. But it does create a little bit...
I'm sorry I asked the question.
No, it's okay.
That's a great, that's a great question. And actually, it gets to the part of the reason we're doing this, too, to make this a more inclusive experience, so you don't have kids working on a tie-dye craft and other kids watching from a distance.
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of...
It was, fewer kids didn't, if 80 kids were registered on the location, probably 74 of the kids signed up and paid the additional money.
Okay.
So it was usually six, a small portion of the kids didn't pay the additional money for it. Sometimes it was because they weren't going to be there that day, other times it was they were, the parents just didn't want to pay extra money, because that was just their thing.
Or couldn't.
Or couldn't. I have a question, maybe I'll put it a different way. Do you have an average of what a student would pay for a week? So was it an average of 80, 85, 90 around this?
About 85 to 90 a week.
So it's almost a wash.
Right.
Now, we are, it's a little bit of an increase, and the other thing...
There's also been increases.
And the other thing we need to consider, too, is the minimum wage is going up again in January, which affects us. We may, you know, our staff, full-time staff, hasn't had a raise in six, seven years or so. ASME is at the table, seeking some compensation increases comparable to what, like, the Police Officers Association received recently. So that's going to affect our bottom line, too. So we're not looking to gouge anybody, we're trying to make this as efficient and as much as possible a cost recovery program for the department, and we come pretty close to doing that. In fact, I would say we're there if you don't add all of the extraneous overhead into the costs, you know, administration.
My primary concern is the inclusiveness of it, you know, to make sure that the kids are all feeling as close to the same as possible. When you have your trips, do the, so these children just stay back?
Trips are different than what we're talking about. The trips will still be limited because of transportation issues, moreover than anything else. So when the kids are not on a field trip, there usually still is activities going on onsite, so if they're going swimming, we're limited to maybe, let's say, Westlake is going swimming, they're limited to 40 participants. One, because the pool can't take too many people out there, and two, they have to take two separate Samtrans buses, so they'll take 40 kids on the swim trip, and then there'll be still kids left behind onsite, and there's still programming going on, so there's something that the kids are participating in. On bigger trips, it'll be the same thing. We're modifying the way we're doing registration for the bigger trips from last year. Last year, it was free for all, only 50 people. This year, we're modifying it, 20 from Westlake, 20 from Geller, 10 from this place, 10 from that place. So the registration numbers will balance out a lot better.
Okay. Thank you.
And the other thing I wanted to point out, part of this, too, is we want to improve the ratio of staff per participant. As I said, at Westlake in particular last year, when we had 140 and some kids in there, we weren't quite geared up for that many, and I'm not saying we ever had bad ratios, but we would definitely like a little better ratio there. And one other thing that's worth pointing out, the going rate for a similar experience in this area is now upwards in the mid-300s to over $400.
Oh, yeah.
No, I have...
We're still, like I said, our intent is not to gouge anybody, we're still the most affordable game in town, and I doubt that the increase in the fees will impact our daily attendance at all.
No, as I said, my only concern was the inclusion thing, so... And if most of them already, were already really paying that amount of money, it's...
Are very close to it, yes.
Yeah. Makes it easier for the parent to just pay one fee, too, so, yeah. Sure, sure, and not have to remember, oh, I forgot to do it, so they missed out on something.
Just to reiterate, you mentioned that this new difference in price for the fee, weekly fee, is also solving the additional charges that would probably have to go out to each participant, it'll probably eliminate the additional charges that, you said that sometimes that you may have to pose out there for add-ons.
Right, and you know what? To that point, too, I'll say, not represented here, but our administrative staff would be very grateful for this transition, because what would happen is a parent would enroll, and let's say for Westlake, just to pay the base fee, and then the kid points out, well, tomorrow we're doing tie-dye. So they don't take cash on any of the sites, so that would drive parents into our offices in great numbers.
Right, and early.
For relatively small transactions, so we would seek to eliminate that, or at least lessen that.
Yeah.
It makes sense.
These are, the projects are also projects that were greater than the normal recreation projects, that were more expensive than what would be covered under the standard programming. It's not just pieces of paper and some glitter, it's, it would be, it would be buying a t-shirt, buying writ dye, buying gloves, buying aprons, buying the, you know...
Rubber bands, whatever you need, yeah.
Really, it was extravagant kind of purchasing, so that's what the additional money went. Or it wasn't just a barbecue of a normal hot dog, it was a hot dog, a hamburger, a fried chicken, a watermelon, and, you know, it was a cookout, or they were making spaghetti and meatballs and stuffing the meatballs. You know, it was extravagant, or additional cost greater than what would normally be under a recreation program.
And I think the biggest thing, if you're a kid and you're there, you don't understand why you're not included, so I think it's great that, you know, if most of them are already paying for it, it's close to the price, and then everyone gets to be included for the regular special stuff, that's good. And it makes it easier for you to buy 20, or 30, or 50, and you're not just buying piecemeal.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any further questions?
Yeah.
So we would, I would seek a...
I make the motion.
A motion, and this would go to the City Council sometime after the new year, and we would introduce the new rate in June.
I'd like to second that motion.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
And moving on to team leaders.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item, for those of you who don't know, Mr. David Zetscher, who helped so much on that last item.
Hey, David.
He's making an encore visit with us, and he's going to talk about team leadership challenge, and most of you are quite intimately familiar with team leadership challenge. We kept the tradition going this past fall, and has a great, a great bunch of kids, and David's going to give you an update on where we are today, and you have a PowerPoint to go with?
Yeah, it's on. So after our team leadership challenge last year, we realized that there needed to be a modification made for this upcoming school year. With the changes in the teen voice and the changes in the teen community, we had to reevaluate the format of the weekend and rebrand what the team leadership challenge was. This year, instead of going into the weekend and asking each school just to do an action plan, we got everybody on the same kind of theme as what is going on in the teen community as a whole, and what are your solutions? So what they went from in that way, they went into their schools and created what we now call "a plan of action." This plan of action was then presented back to us, the city employees, and we came up with the recreation's plan of action for the teen community this fall 2015. What resulted in, out of this weekend is the Recreation Department's Plan of Action is, it's a working title, but right now, it's our Spring Thing 2016. It's a spring school fair, club group organization showcase for the high schools. It's kind of like a science fair, or an art show, or anything like that. It's whatever the high schools want to present, and we'll host it at one of our facilities. It would be all six of the high schools, plus any of our other teen organizations that are part of the TLC family. Did I just skip one? Nope, just kidding. Where are we? There we go. So as I mentioned a little bit ago, yeah, it's a club or an activity fair, a flea market or a bazaar or a craft fair, it's maybe a booth decorating contest, a minute-to-win-it style, teachers versus faculty versus students kind of activities on stage, and then hopefully we could get information booths from some of our community partners, like the Daly City Youth Health Center, the Daly City Partnership, maybe the Police Department, and other organizations like that, some door prizes, and then more. The date on our calendars is Saturday, April 30th, from 11:00 to 4:00, at the Pacelli Event Center in Westlake Gym. At this time, we're reserving eight tables for each school. Clubs, clubs, groups, and organizations can apply to get a table, there's no fee. Each table will consist of a one eight-foot table and two folding chairs. This is kind of the setup, similar to how we used to have the Black History Fair or the craft fair at the Dolgers, or I'm sorry, at the Pacelli Gym. Each of the colors represents one of our schools or organizations. We mix them up, so that way, there's not just a whole row of El Camino, and it doesn't turn into an El Camino versus Jefferson, or anything like that. No, mix it all up, so we're all part of a community. So in a presentation that we did last Friday to our teens, we spoke to the TLC alumni, and we asked them, or we told them that, you know, we can't do an event like this without you. We're going to bring back all the TLC 2015 participants, and then hopefully some more alumni, and have them join us for some more planning and more in-depth planning. We will also need them to help get their schools involved, their clubs, organizations, so we can have people to table and vend. The three committees that the teens will have a chance to join are marketing, logistics, fundraising, and donations. I will be heading logistics. Ray Reyes working in marketing, and Supervisor Jennifer Durr in fundraising and donations. Fun fact is, the City of Pacifica recently did something similar, and on a whim, and they found it to be highly successful, and said they can't wait to do it again next year in a bigger facility. So I was in a meeting the other day when I heard this, and I'm like, great, we're on the right path. Another opportunity that came up with our TLC teens is they were invited to come back and participate and volunteer at two upcoming events, our pizza night decoration setup for the annual Yuletide setup, or I'm sorry, Yuletide Holiday Celebration and Tree Lighting, and the actual Yuletide Holiday Carnival itself. Thank you.
How many participants did you have this time?
65. Around, around 65, I think.
And how many of the alumni do you think will come back?
I don't know, it's, we've, we've averaged around 60 participants every year. I don't know, I think right now would be the only year we have probably maybe 150 in each school, because we stop bringing specifically juniors and seniors each year, so we probably have about 150 in each school. Who knows how many come back, but we'll try to get announcements in through the bulletin, the school bulletins, to say, hey, TLC alumni, come back, we need your help.
So, so this event is a fundraising event, kind of?
It doesn't have to be a fundraising event, they can use it as a chance to create, if they're a knitting club and they want to sell their scarves, great for them. If it's just the drama club and they want to show photos for their, of their past productions, it's great. It could be whatever they want to do. It's not, excuse me, it's not just about selling or buying, it's about showing off in that way. It's what we heard, is they don't know what, we heard this from three or four of the schools, they don't know what the other schools are doing, they would kind of like to know what they're doing.
Uh-huh.
Well, without going onto each other's campus, the only other way to do it would be to invite everybody to come see what, into one place and show it off in another way. If they want to sell cookies, or maybe not cookies, but if they want to sell something as a part of, a way to get some more money for their club, great. If not, they just want a poster board and show off, great, too.
Where would the raffle proceeds be used for?
We didn't even say that there would be a raffle, it would just be door prizes right now.
Okay.
We're not trying to create any revenue off of the event. That could be for discussion later. Right now, we just have a lot of kind of geeky, nerdy kind of donations. I say geeky and nerdy, they're all left prizes donated from when we used to have video game competitions. So we have a good start right now on some good door prizes. Star Wars, Star Trek, Doctor Who.
Cool.
So it sounds like this is an event that says, it's time to shine, time to shine in front of the community.
That's kind of what we're hoping to, and maybe even we could get some of the school bands to come out, or...
Nice.
Spirit clubs and all.
Solo performers.
That's good, glad to see that.
Behind me today, actually, is one of the young men who participated in this year's fall retreat. Yeah, we... Introduce yourself.
Hi, my name is Khalid, Khalid Charra, so...
Louder.
Sorry. So my name is Khalid Charra, and I went to TLC like a month ago, so it was a really great experience, and I'm really glad I went. Met a lot of new people, learned a lot of new things, you know, the staff was really generous, they're really kind. I had a really great time. It's, you know, it's experience, oh, I'm glad I had the opportunity to take advantage of. It's an experience I definitely won't forget, so I'm really glad I went to TLC. It's something that, something that's really great for the students, I mean, I talked to all my friends that went with me, too, they say it was awesome. I talked to my friends from other schools, from Oceana, from Jeff, from, from Alco, from everywhere, they say they love it. I met, I mean, I learned a lot of things from students, from staff. It's something that should definitely keep going on in the future.
Good.
Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
Yeah, it's a great program.
It's a great program.
I'm glad to see it's still going on.
So moving on, Commissioner reports, do we have any?
The...
It's here. With that, announcements?
A couple of quick announcements. We certainly hope to see all of you at our annual Yuletide Holiday Celebration, which will be Saturday, excuse me, December 19th. It's going to be in the gym, the Pacelli Gym at Westlake Park, and we're starting a little bit early this year, we're going to start at 4:00 and go until about 6:30. There'll be food, games, entertainment, I believe Santa Claus will be there, he usually makes an appearance at some point. It's a fun, community-wide event. We don't have a lot of those in Daly City, but this is one that we have around the holiday season.
I've enjoyed them in the past.
And, related to that, if all goes well, by Friday, December 18th, the parking lot at Westlake Park will be completely reconstructed. And anyone that might be listening at home, we had been gearing up for construction starting on Monday, November 30th. I just found out, just before I came over here, that schedule's being pushed back one week, and it's important for everyone who does anything on the field, in the gym, or the cafe, we're going to lose the main parking lot, probably over the course of two entire days, they're going to grind it all the way down, some of it has to be uplifted, I think is the term they use, because there's so much damage. I would guess that parking lot hasn't been touched in 30-plus years, if not more. If you've been out there, it's a little bit of a hazard out there, so we're really grateful that we're going to have a brand spanking new asphalt parking lot. On the downside, though, is that we will be inconvenienced rather greatly between December 7th and December 18th, for sure. This is part of a citywide project that doesn't end at our Westlake Park. It will be the parking lot over by Larkum, the parking lot by the treatment plant, parking lot at 200 North Gate, where the Westlake School for Performing Arts is, and also parking lot here, the back entrance to the Police Department, is all part of that. So it's a pretty major undertaking, all by one contractor, and so we beg everyone's indulgence and patience during the construction period. It's going to be loud, it's going to be dirty and noisy, but in the end, we'll have a much-needed new parking lot at Westlake Park.
Great. Before I forget, through the chair, I just wanted to say that, did we discuss at the last meeting, the Filipino celebration that we had at Pacelli's? It was a really great event, and I just didn't... No, because we didn't have a meeting. That's right. So I just would like to say that it was a very, very nice, nice event. I enjoyed the different booths and the clothing, they had a parade, and, you know, nice music, and it was a great event, it was very nice, so... Definitely was. Yeah.
Through the chair, you mentioned something about construction. Over in the ceremony neighborhood, there has been some work going on on the Norwood Playground structure.
Oh, yes.
And I pass that every day when I go down Saravista, and it's very colorful, so if you ever get up in that neighborhood, stop by and watch the progress.
I didn't realize that it started already.
Yeah, and I think it looks like they're, kind of like in their phase of doing some final touch-ups, so, but the structures are all up, and I think the ancillary things like tables and what have you are things that they still need to work on, but it's still fenced off, but it sounds like once the weather warms up again, it'll probably have a nice little ribbon cutting.
As you recall, we brought that project to the Recreation Commission several months ago, and it's good to see it's on track and wrapping up.
You go by and check it out.
And then in closing, we talked about dates, do we have a date yet for the Operation Santa Claus?
The toys will be delivered on Monday, December 14th. Voice is cracking like Peter Brady today. Monday, December 14th, which also happens to be the date of the City Council reorganization and a very lengthy City Council regular meeting after that. I believe the packing of the toys will take place the previous Saturdays, so it would be the 12th?
Yeah, Saturday or Sunday, yeah.
And if you need more details, we can certainly get those to you.
Just email the group when it's ready, thank you.
Thank you.
That's it?
Yeah, if you can't make it to Operation Santa Claus to deliver toys, you're certainly welcome, along with the public, to the reorganization meeting here on Monday, December 14th. I believe the reorganization will be at 6, followed by a regular City Council meeting at 7:00.
I just wanted to say that the Yuletide Celebration is a great family experience, and for people that use the rec services, the viewing public out there, it's a good opportunity to bring the young ones that maybe aren't ready quite yet to participate in our programs and see what Daly City has to offer, so it's a good family event, and if the public can come on out, you know, they're welcome, and it's free, and there's a lot, a lot of, it's a great time when Santa Claus shows up, because kids really, you know, they need to feel that. It's a great time when Santa Claus shows up because kids really, you know, they need to feel that experience and here, here he comes and they light the tree and. There's generally, um, some, some kind of performance or whatnot as well, so come on out and see that.
And beautiful decorations.
Games.
Decorations and games, yeah. It's fun, it's a fun time.
It's a good time.
Do we want to talk about the December meeting?
We can.
I defer to the, to the commission. I think our regular meeting would be.
The twenty-second? Second, I think it is.
Well, it'll be the following week.
It would be.
The last Tuesday is.
It's, it's, I think it's the twenty-second. I, I will be here.
Yeah, it'd be the twenty-second, right?
The last Tuesday.
Well, the last one, but there's, there's five.
It's the fourth Tuesday.
So the fourth one is the twenty-second.
Yeah. Is there anything for us to discuss? Is there anything that can't wait till January?
I don't know that we don't have anything that can't wait till January. Um, I'm, I'm hoping one of our coming attractions will be similar to, we had the presentation about Norwood Park. I hope we can bring our engineering folks out here to talk about the turf at Geller Park, which if you haven't been out there. That turf is now thirteen-plus years old and ravaged.
Yeah, yeah.
And so it is one of our capital projects that is scheduled for this fiscal year. Um, I don't know that they would have anything for, uh, the December meeting, but.
Do you need a, a motion to not have the meeting or can we?
I don't think I need a motion. If, if it's the pleasure of the commission to, to skip December, we'll just cancel the meeting and convene in January.
Okay, yeah. Happy holidays.
I see a lot of nodding heads, so.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'm gonna be wrapping presents probably on the twenty-second.
And you know, one other thing I want to add, um, actually at the request of the Library Board of Trustees, we're trying to have a Brown Act, um, review. And we did that with the Arts and Culture Commission and they seemed to enjoy it. And there's been some procedural Brown Act questions that most of all of you are veteran commissioners. But if it's something that interested you, I would consider having a joint meeting of the Board of Trustees with the Recreation Commission to have a, about a half-hour session on the Brown Act.
Would be a meeting or a study session?
It'd be a study session. We'd probably do it upstairs at City Hall.
Can do that.
Yeah, no, it's fine. It's great. It's always great to be reminded of these things.
Yeah, I don't know if there've been any changes, but if it's something you haven't, uh, reviewed lately, it might, it might be worthwhile.
Could be for sure.
And it's also, if it's possible, we could do that and have a joint meeting that night if you.
We, I would, you know, we, we threw over a long list of dates with the Library Board of Trustees. Um, ideally for us, since you meet at seven, we could, we could maybe schedule on the same day as your regular meeting, but earlier, either, uh, you know, six-thirty or even six.
Okay, sure.
Sounds good.
Yep. Whatever you need.
It works.
All right, stay tuned for that. That, that'll be in January, we hope.
So do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Happy Thanksgiving, doll.
Happy Thanksgiving.